David, are you ready? Everybody ready? All right. Good evening and welcome to the October 1st, 2015 Planning Commission meeting for the City of West Sacramento. And per tradition, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, I'm going to have our Secretary, Mr. Tilly, lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a note, if you would like to address the Commission this evening, there are little slips of paper over there on the side credence. Just bring it up, hand it to Katie. Katie will bring it up to me. And I will call you up in the order that I receive, that we receive them. First item on the agenda is presentations by public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Commission. I have no request to speak at this time. So I'll move over to staff communications. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, no correspondence tonight. I just want to ask any Commissioners who are planning to attend either the upcoming APA Conference or the ULI Conference, if we could talk individually after the meeting about that briefly. We'd like to, you know, help with some of your costs for that potentially.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is disclosure of ex parte communications. Planning Commissioners must disclose any communication that we've had with any of the applicants on tonight's agenda. No? Lots of no's. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the September 17th, 2015 meeting.
I move to approve unless someone has another comment.
Moved by Commissioner Austin, seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Regular agenda. First item is the public hearing regarding tentative parcel map 5049 at 1647 and 1657 Tamarack Road. Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chair LeBig and members of the Commission. This item is a request for approval of a tentative parcel map which would create two parcels from 1.52 acre parcel. Both parcels are proposed to be about a quarter of an acre in size. The project site contains two existing residences and the parcels are being configured so that one residence would be on each parcel. Each individual residence currently is served by its own septic system. One correction to the staff report, we did indicate that they were also served by individual wells. We have, since the staff report went out, we have discovered they are actually on city water. So, the parcel map is being requested to facilitate placing each residence on its own parcel. Would also like to note that back in 2004, the Planning Commission did essentially approve this exact project. However, the applicants at that time never processed the final map, which is why they're coming back to you from the beginning again. As I said, there are septic systems on the property. The applicant has proactively reached out to environmental health, which has indicated that they are in support of the parcel map application. Attachment number four essentially addresses that. Also, they have shown that it is possible to have the 100 percent replacement field should they need it. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is in the audience. They aren't intending to make a presentation unless you should have questions for them. But I'm happy to answer any questions should you have.
Thank you, Kathy. Just in case there are any questions, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Moore? Yes?
My only question, all this is, is a lot split.
Yes.
Do they meet the setbacks on both parcels?
Yes, they do.
Because it looked like the parcel on 47 was on a zero lot line. I don't even know if that was true or not.
It, there is actually five feet. The way it's drawn is a little confusing, but if you look at the one set of arrows, there actually is a 10-foot gap. So there's enough for five feet between each parcel and they ran the line right down the middle.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comments or questions, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, sorry, if you have...
Yeah, I'd like to talk with this group.
Okay. Can you first state your name and...
...1588 Tamarack Road.
Please give that to Katie.
It's on the microphone itself, down at the bottom.
That work?
Yes.
Okay. I bought a vacant lot on Tamarack in 1985. Started building in 1985 and 1986, got the necessary permits. Moved in in late 86, so I've been there almost 30 years. I moved there because of the size of the lots. I moved there because they were all half-acre lots. It was a well-planned community. It's been that way for, Charlie's been here longer than me, so he should know, he's been here, I don't know, 60, 70 years, Linden Acres out there. I was very happy to get the vacant lot. I was very happy to build my home out there. And I did it because they were half-acre lots. At one point, seven, eight years ago, my next-door neighbor's daughter came by to see me. She was in her late 30s or 40s, and she says she was carrying a petition around because she wanted to split the lot next door to me and split it in half and move in the back of her mother and father's house. And wanted to know if I would support that. You know, I will tell you tonight and the applicant what I told her then, that her mother and father and I get along very well. They're great neighbors. I love them to death. But, and she seemed like a very nice person, too. But there's no way that I'm going to support that. Her mother and father moved out there before I got there, 20 years before I got there, because they wanted the property. And she says, "So you won't sign my petition?" No. She carried that petition up and down the street and she never got a signature on it. As far as this 2004 approval, I wasn't aware of it. I didn't receive a notice back then, or I guarantee you, I would have been down here and I'd have been voicing my same concern. You know, I've never been through like, something like this before. I've made plenty of presentations to councils and planning commissions throughout, but if you look at the attachment one, these houses are very close together. And I'm trying to understand how people are going to get in and out there. Are you, are you guys telling us that those two houses, the backyards, are going to be split in half and two more houses are going to go back there? Is that what I'm hearing tonight?
I'll note the questions and then after the public comment period, we'll definitely follow up with it.
Okay. Will I hear my answer tonight?
Yes, you will hear it.
Okay, good. Good. Because if you look at that attachment one, I'm wondering how people are going to get in and out of there. Those houses are so close together. If the plan is to put two houses back there or one house, there's still no room. I mean, you could, I guess you could squeeze down one side or another, but all you guys have to do is go out there, drive by there and review the size of those lots now and look at the frontage on those lots. And there, there is no more parking room out in front. There's motor homes and cars and, I mean, I don't know who else is going to bring cars and motor homes, et cetera. I just think this is wrong. If you allow this to happen at this property, you are setting the stage for it to happen for everybody else out there to say, "I want to do the same thing." And you're going to destroy Linden Acres as we have known it for 65, 70 years, for me, for 30 years. I'm very concerned about this. I'm not going to support it. I do worry about how people are going to get in and out of there. If the plan is to cut some sort of road back in the farmer's field back there, I haven't seen anything from him on here that is going to allow that. So I...
Mr. Chairman, you should let Kathy answer because that's not what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Bonilla.
I sure would like to know because I may not understand it and I'd like to try to understand it.
Okay. I think, I think we'll have Kathy attempt to answer your questions, but thank you so much.
In, in terms of his inquiry, they aren't proposing to add any additional residences. They're just basically dividing the property so that the two existing residences out there will be on their own separate parcel. The lot, in terms of the lot sizes, the property out there is zoned R1B, which has a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet at a quarter of an acre each. These well exceed that, so it meets the sizing requirements.
Thank you, Kathy. That was actually one of my questions. So this, the resulting lot size is actually already allowed under the current zoning. They are existing houses. Would splitting the, splitting the properties allow for construction of additional homes on those properties?
Like other single-family residential properties, there is the potential, should the owners want to, to put a second unit on the property. It would have to meet the parameters prescribed in the zoning ordinance, which is 700 square feet or half the size of the existing house, whichever is less.
So essentially like a mother-in-law?
Yeah, that's, that is the common vernacular. In this, in this case, you know, the lack of sewer in this area is probably the biggest limiting factor to, you know, how many, how many units could go on any of these, any of these properties. And, but in looking at attachment one, although the half-acre is the, sort of the predominant, you know, lot size in this area, there certainly are other parcels that are already of similar size, even just across the street and even adjacent to this property on Redwood Avenue. It is, it's not unprecedented to go to the quarter acre in this area.
I think there was a second part of the question from Mr. Bonilla. Bonilla, is it?
Yes.
And Kathy, if you could address, I know that item number seven, if you could kind of clarify the question about access and driveways?
Oh, thank you.
The engineering department has required a reciprocal access agreement between the two properties due to the closeness of them so that it would guarantee that there is access to the rear of both properties.
And just to confirm, that would mean that, that access to those rear part, the proposed rear parcels would be on the applicant's current property, not going through someone else's property nor on the, nor to the property behind? Okay. Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing, are there any questions of the applicant? Follow-up questions of the applicant?
I just wanted to make sure the applicant, did, so do you understand...
That's not the applicant.
Sorry, not the applicant, the, Mr. Bonilla. So you understand that this is a little different than what you presented or what you were concerned about? Is that, I just want to make sure those concerns that you had are addressed. I know there are going to be some that we can't address, that we have...
Well, the applicant's here.
Right.
I don't understand why you're going to split a half-an acre lot, two half-acre lots to quarter acre lots. And, and the applicant's here, and why don't we ask them, what are they going to do? I mean, you guys said, well, you know, there's...
If the applicant would like to make a statement, we can, we can definitely bring him up, but that's not required.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd like to know. If they're not going to build houses back there, and you guys, in your reports, you talk about driveways and there's plenty of room for another sewer system. I mean, so it sounds to me like the plan is made.
Okay. It, it sounds like the applicant would like to...
That's, that's not what we said.
No, that's not...
There, there's room if the one sewer system failed to put it somewhere else on the lot. So you can't build there.
Mr. Moore, I don't think that, that's what that says in your report. I may, I may have missed it. It's the first time I've seen you report when I picked it up here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the applicant's going to talk. I'd like to hear that.
I know you're the applicant. Can you please state your name?
My name is David Triplet with Morris Surveying. I represent the, the app, the owners here. Yeah, it's simply, the environmental approval has, shows 100 percent replacement, which is required by law in order to divide, the division couldn't take place, you know, if we didn't have a way to provide for a failure of the existing sewer system. So it's not any, any proposal at all to add anything to these parcels. We're simply going to split in a half-acre parcel into two quarters. Land use doesn't change. It's been that way for a lot of years. It stays with two residential. It's just that they're owned by separate people. I hope that kind of answers the questions. There's no proposed development other than...
No proposed development.
Just separate ownership.
Okay.
Okay.
And then just to be clear on the point, I just wanted to ask the staff, I believe you said that the zoning is for quarter acre parcels at minimum, right?
6,000 is the, is the minimum in this area.
Zoning requires, much smaller parcels would allow much smaller parcels.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I think I misunderstood.
Yeah. And then one of the things is access is between the two houses. And it's simply, engineering has asked for, because there's a paved driveway there, they don't want ingress egress across something that's not theirs. So they've asked for an access easement to benefit both parcels. Our proposal is simply we'll create it so that both parcels have access to the backyard.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to close the public hearing. I think, I think we...
I have one more question.
I'm sorry. I think, if you could follow up with the applicant directly afterwards, I'm, I think we're...
I really want, I have one more question, please. I came all the way down here.
Okay. I will reopen public hearing.
If, maybe I'm just thick-headed here and I'm not understanding. And that's entirely possible. As an ex-union rep, I've been known to be both ways. Okay? So if, if you're not going to build homes on the back of those properties, why split them? What is the plan of these applicants? I think it's important that you guys know that before you approve this.
Kathy?
Because that's going to make all the difference in the world to the people that are living out there.
Would you like to answer this question, Kathy? Or would I?
Chair LeBig, actually, I can, I can answer that for the Commission.
Thank you, Mona.
So a tentative parcel map, a parcel map or a tentative map are common mechanisms for subdividing property for, in this case, financing, leasing, or the sale of property. Occasionally, there will be a large acreage of land. There will be more than one unit on it and future generations decide that they would like to split the land and stay on one portion of it, sell the rest, or preserve it and save it for their family members. So first of all, this is a pretty common mechanism that is contemplated in the Subdivision Map Act. This particular application meets all the requirements of the city's general plan and zoning code. And for purposes of SEQA, there are no physical improvements that are being contemplated here that would need any kind of further discretionary permit. So the only things that staff is conditionning this map on are the improvements that have been set forth in the staff report and things like paving the existing Tamarack Road to city standard specifications. So again, in summary, this is a pretty routine way in order for a property owner to be able to sell, lease, or otherwise exchange property without changing the physical constitution of the, of the existing land.
If at some point in the future, they decided to take these two lots and build houses on them, would they have to come back before the planning commission to do that? Or are they free to do that?
So Chair LeBig, we're, we're sort of going in an unorthodox fashion. I, staff and I usually don't respond to questions from the public, so if you'd like me to respond to that, I can. I know that there's only one member of the public, but just so the Commission is aware, as staff had already indicated, while there's a potential for an accessory unit or a secondary unit, if it meets the requirements of the code to be built, essentially, these properties would be treated in the same exact way that any other property in that area would be. So if any other property that meets those specifications are allowed to have accessory units or a secondary dwelling unit, then they'd be able to do so. However, they have to go through the appropriate permits, building permits and so forth.
Thank you, Mona. Thank you. I know we've gone a little informal here, but as long as, if we can attempt to answer everybody's questions, I think we can definitely spare the time. So thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Bonilla, for your comments. And hopefully that clarified everything. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for deliberation. Are there any additional comments, questions?
I just coughed. I didn't have it.
On the side? Okay. So just, I know that we've had a lot of extra questions. So as far as my understanding, this, this procedure is allowed under the current zoning. We're dividing a parcel with two existing homes on it. This does not include any permission to construct any additional homes on the property outside of what is allowed under the general plan currently. For example, mother-in-laws could be, could be added if facilities are allowed that, uses the existing access. The land use doesn't change. And if the parcels wish to be further divided, they would, yes, need to come back to the Commission, so.
So, Chair LeBig, I, my perception of the situation is that what the applicant is proposing to do is well within their right as a property owner and it's consistent with our policies and practices. I, I do appreciate the, the neighbors' comments and concerns, but again, it's, was well within the applicant's right. And so for those reasons and the reasons that you've outlined, I'd like to move staff approval for item two.
Moved by Commissioner Austin.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Timber. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Tilly?
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the City Clerk within 10 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number three, which is a public workshop on the General Plan 2035 Draft Land Use, Urban Structure and Design, and Healthy Communities Element. And this is going to be presented by Mr. Tilly.
Thank you. I'm going to try to do it from the podium here tonight because I have a little short PowerPoint to try to help us walk through it because I know I gave the Commission a lot of material this evening. So it's part of our efforts to complete our update to our general plan, which we refer to as General Plan 2035. We have been rolling out the policy elements to the Planning Commission and some of the other Commissions that we have where they have that jurisdiction. And so tonight, we want to bring three pretty substantive ones tonight, but also ones that are very much, you know, interrelated. So land use, urban structure and design, and then healthy communities. So the land use element is one of those, you know, core elements that's in every general plan, is one of the, one of the acquired features, you know, in a, in a general plan. And so we currently have an existing land use element. It includes the various land use designations on properties, you know, throughout town. It establishes general ranges of densities and allowable uses and the character of those different land use designations. And it also establishes a land use, a land use mix that we're going for in our community. And so our, this proposed new land use element continues building on, you know, the themes that have been in our current general plan from a land use point of view, and then tries now to take them into, you know, the future as we, as we look out to 2035. So the land use element has sort of several, what I'm calling, you know, themes, if you will. And so I want to sort of summarize the themes for you and then perhaps at the end of each... I'm not sure what that was. So at the, perhaps at the end of discussion of each element, we can talk about some of the individual policies if that would behoove the, behoove the Planning Commission. So, we, we lead off on this land use element, which is something that's very important and is on everyone's minds, the idea of, you know, sustainability. We do want to grow, but also in a sustainable manner in our community. And so our first land use goal is just that, is to provide for sustainable and orderly, well-planned growth that meets our needs of our residents and businesses. And so then there are several policies under that general theme, if you will, of under sustainability and, and dealing with, addresses things, you know, green buildings, you know, infill and refill, everything under the name of, you know, sustainable growth and development. The next general theme is related to regional growth and how, what our part is in that. One of our overall objectives in our general plan is to comply with a lot of the land use legislation that has been passed over the last several years in our, in our region, most notably SB 375. It also is very important for us to be tracking with the SECOG Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy, more, more briefly known as the MTP and SCS. Our growth that we're projecting out to 2035 very much mirrors what's in the MTP for our area with a few sort of corrections down at our level of geography. And this is important for us to the extent we're, we're consistent with the MTP and the SCS. It affords us a lot of streamlining in, you know, future development projects and future, especially when it comes to future environmental review. And also, when we're ultimately found to be consistent with the SCS, that means that our individual development projects will not be subject to oversight by the Delta Stewardship Council. So this is an important objective for us. And of course, as we mentioned, we will continue to have a variety of land use types in neighborhoods in our community. As much as we're moving in a, in a much more compact and mixed-use direction, we will maintain our, you know, residential neighborhoods, commercial centers, and continue to build on our mixed-use areas and also, of course, maintain our industrial base. We're not proposing any expansion of our industrial areas, but we do propose to maintain our industrial base for the most part. And we want to provide for public and quasi-public areas, that's, you know, places for services in our community, and as well as when we, we've been going through our parks and recreation element, parks and open space remain also a very important part for us. And also, potentially more challenging was to go forward, you know, as we continue to infill in our community. Under these districts, we're trying to identify some very distinct areas in our community that have a character unto themselves, such as the Central Business District and our waterfront areas. We have many goals on how we're going to try to help advance existing and long-plan objectives in those areas as we begin to see much more infill activity in our community. And we're trying to also now formally memorialize some of the policies that have been identified for along West Capitol Avenue and sort of by companion Sacramento Avenue, is, is moving in a much more mixed-use direction in these corridors to try to be more flexibility, try to infill them more, particularly with housing, you know, as we continue to not expect a lot of commercial activity to... activity to sort of infill along those corridors as we go forward. So in some of the prior studies that have done, such as the West Capitol Avenue Action Plan and others, trying to memorialize that in this document, set that policy foundation. So part of what the overall theme here and under the, especially as it relates back to parks and open spaces, this is recognizing those as a land use. However, we have an entire separate element, which we'll bring, I believe, to your next meeting, where we get into more specifics about what we mean by recreation, parks, and those features. But keeping at the general plan level, all of those will still point to an overall update to the Parks Master Plan that will be what will really ultimately get into the weeds of exactly how big a park should be, what types of facilities we should have. And so that will be an implementation measure of the general plan going forward. But this is also one to highlight how many, not only does the general plan have to be internally consistent, but there is definitely overlap in some of these areas. And so that's why as parks are considered as a land use element, but then there's also a whole section about parks and recreation as a standalone document. So if, I'd be happy to, we could talk a little further about the land use element now and then move on to the next ones after questions, or we can come back at the end and cover everything. It's sort of what would be the commission's pleasure.
Would you guys like to get through everything, or hit it one piece at a time?
This was the mediest of the three, so.
This was the easiest of?
Well, the mediest of the three.
Oh, medias. I was like, really?
No, it's not the easiest at all. So it's, I certainly don't mind doing, going through it. Only have maybe a few more minutes of remarks.
I think we can get through it all and then come back to it. Seems like an easy audience tonight.
Yes. So urban structure and design, this is an important element, and I apologize that we had it a little bit out of order as your attachment to your staff report. This is also a fairly broad-level document, but also relates very much back to land use element. And we have an element like this in our current general plan, and we're trying to build forward with this. But what this element overall really addresses is some very broad-level design objectives, but really sort of in key areas, primarily gateways and entry features, and identifies certain districts, and then relates back to the land use element. Because we're looking at land uses, it's not just, you know, where are they and what are they, but it's also what are they shaped like, you know, what should they be like? So this is another aspect where these two elements definitely will need to work hand in hand, so we'll get to our ultimate objectives. So some additional themes that are part of this, you know, we are looking for unique urban design in many respects. General plan will not say what that is necessarily. That will be left more to the specific plans that are in given neighborhoods and any future design guidelines that we may adopt in given areas. But we want to make sure we're identifying these important, distinct areas of our town that convey, especially in image regionally, be it our gateways, our waterfront areas, things like that. We also want to get into also, you know, streetscapes. And part of streetscapes is not just having them be there and be attractive, but also be safe. Some of the underlying themes that we're working through this is involving healthy lifestyles, crime prevention through environmental design, and also being an age-friendly community. And so many of these features all relate back to being these things. Fortunately for us, many of these things do nest well together. An age-friendly community is a healthy community and vice versa. And having well-designed streets that are accessible but also safe all relate back to being a healthy community and a safe community. This element is also important, as much as it points to things that are going to happen and into the future, we also want to be mindful of our existing communities and neighborhoods and character, and try to make sure that many, much of that is retained and identified and recognized as being important. Our community is unique, although we're still a relatively small community. We have the full urban-rural transect here in our community and everything in between. I think it's one of the things that makes our city great, is you really have lots of different landscapes in our community. And so we do want to, as much as we're trying to move forward, we do not want to lose sight of what we have been either. So now let's move on to, I think, the newest one, which I think hopefully will be the funnest one, which is healthy community. This will be a new element for us, although many communities are starting to include a healthy community or something analogous to it in their general plans. It's emerging as a very important topic as matters of health are obviously front and center in many, many different forums. And so we're proposing to include this element, recognizing that health is important, and also recognizing that how the city grows and develops can affect health. And it can affect health in a positive or negative way, depending on how we want to go about it. So obviously, we would prefer to affect that in a positive way. And so we're trying to establish some broad policies that relate back to health, but are stay within the city's sort of role and realm and what a city does in respect to health. And it's really sort of health on a broad scale in what's within the city's power to influence health. And primarily, what that relates to is access to recreational facilities, access to medical care, access to fresh fruits, vegetables, things like that, to make sure those are all distributed on an equitable basis. But that also, active living is something that we can promote and we can provide those spaces, and then also provide them in a safe way so that they can hopefully be used in the most broadly, broad sense. And a healthy community, in our minds, is also one that is better economically, better socially, better culturally, and our role primarily from the development standpoint can help advance some of those issues. Recognizing that actual day-to-day health care is much more of a state and county function, we're not trying to usurp that responsibility, but to the extent the city can facilitate having those services here by making sure we have adequate properties set up for people that can develop a medical office or clinic of some sort, that we can have access to plenty of sites where if it's possible, therefore, we're doing the urban farms all over town, all these things, trying to get access and bring things to people and make it there, and then try to have the best and most efficient ways to get to these places that people need. So that's where it rolls back to some of the recreation goals, trails, open space, but then also coming back to crime prevention through environmental design, making, if there's a park down the street, it's great, but if there's not a safe way to get there, you're not going to go there. And some of these things are sort of taken for granted, but it is sort of that simple in many ways, that that park will be better used if people can get to it and if it's safe to get there. So those sort of underlying themes going through this element, and much of what we're doing elsewhere, be it the connectivity in the mobility element, the parks and recreation policies that we'll bring to your next meeting, all relate back to what is sort of, those are all components of what a healthy community is. And also, an important, part of this element is we're updating and keeping our childcare policies. We were one of the first cities in the state to have a whole element in general plan dedicated to childcare. It was very innovative at the time. And so even though we're proposing not to have that be a standalone element anymore, I think it gives even better foundation to have it be part of the healthy community section. So the city maintains an active early learning program as part of that, but we also want to make sure that childcare is available to the extent that's within the city's power to do so, and sort of recognizing how important this is toward an overall healthy community. So with that, I would be happy to answer. Any questions about any of the elements we brought before you tonight?
Thank you, David, and thank you to your staff. This looks like it took quite a bit of work to pull together. And I specifically want to note that I appreciate the level of effort that you put into the details, getting the right to show consistency between other elements within the general plan and other documents that have already been before us. In fact, one of my comments was, it feels like I've read this already. I've read portions of this.
Well, that is good, Ben, because we do, I don't mean to say it in jest, we do have to be internally consistent, but we do want to also then have the, you know, the elements do, should support each other in terms of what we're all trying to achieve in our community.
That was apparent to me. So I think we should just take these in the order that you gave them, just if that would make that easier for you. And the first section or element you went over was land use.
Can I make an overarching comment and then we can go through?
Sure.
So I want to.
We're being informal tonight anyway.
I know. Well, I want to echo my colleagues' appreciation for the work that went into this. And I just want to highlight something for anyone who might be watching this at home, and also for my fellow commissioners. So there's three components that we're looking at tonight, right? The land use element, the urban structure and design element, and the healthy community element. The land use element is the only one that's required for a general plan. The other two are optional. And I think that it says a heck of a whole lot that these are included and that they are as well thought out and well-written as they are. I think that's really, really a testament to our incredible staff who really pay attention. I think, you know, between our policymakers and the team that worked on this, our city has really paid attention to some details. And just to share again some insight, I'm very familiar with a lot of general plans, and some of my friends and colleagues are folks who review these statewide. And I would say personally that the components that I've seen so far and tonight are definitely, some top-tier work that really is very progressive and really shows a commitment to sustainability and equity in particular. So that being said, I do have individual comments, but I think we can go down the line.
That's all right. I'll start with you.
Start with me on the land use? We'll be here all night. It's okay. I'll try and make it easy. Okay, so land use, I'm on, it's like page two dash two, so there's attachment two, page two dash two. LU 1.3 Green Rating System. I'd like to see options beyond LEED. There's a lot, you know, we could maybe say example, oh, such as, it's already included. Okay, ignore that comment.
You know, I would be interested in, you know, if there are other things we should point to. I do feel like that the LEED stuff might be falling a little out of favor these days. But we, and the building code is adopting a lot of these things, sort of as standard requirements, but.
But like green point rated, there's several others. I mean, I think if you included two others, it's not that big of a deal, but you're right. And just for folks' benefit, LEED is slightly falling out of this favor because it's actually very expensive for a designation, and you can also build to high green building standards without being actually certified. So there's this, LEED, green point rated, and the other one is, I'm blanking on.
Living building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, I think, the primaries why LEED is fallen, because the documentation to get that designation is really expensive. And there's plenty of LEED buildings out there that just don't have the certification on the wall.
Right. And the performance sometimes isn't as, actually, that great.
So I believe the commissioner who was responsible for the first LEED Platinum Building Restaurant in Sacramento. We've got an expert here.
Is that a hot Italian?
I'm shooting over to page 217. Should I just go down mine, or are we going to go in order? I'm so sorry. I'm like.
I think we should just go through yours first, but stay on land use.
Yes, land use. So page 217, item 3.8 Walkable Neighborhoods. I would like to see, I'd like you to skip there. Sorry, what page were you on? So two dash seven.
Two dash seven.
And that's LU 3.8.
No. Page 2.7?
217.
217. Apparently, I can't read numbers. This is embarrassing. 217, and it's number 3.8. But if you just kind of skip to 3.8, you'll get there, just before commercial centers. I would just like to make sure that there's an emphasis on connectivity or consistency with any master planning, particularly of bike ped. So, you know, for example, you know, I'll give the example, I know that Liberty Development is going to be coming forward, but I would like to make sure that as we review and approve, because staff look at it before we do, I'd like to make sure that as that is an example, that you would see connectivity between like the Clarksburg Rail, and that you wouldn't just have cute little green belt walking paths, but that they actually connect to, you know, to where people would destination, such as, you know, the Nugget Target Shopping Center, the neighborhoods, the existing neighborhood schools and/or proposed neighborhood schools, things like that. I think it's really important that we emphasize that.
That actually is important, and I think we're fortunate now that we're seeing larger master plan projects come to us. We can get this better than sort of doing a couple hundred units at a time. We have not knitted some of those together as well as you might have wanted to. So we've always wanted to do that, but we want to have this in here now, and this should be a staple of any master plan project that we do.
And I'd like to echo that. I think staff has been very consistently bringing that forward, but know that that's one of the things I look at. Moving to page 219, because now I know my numbers. Just minor, section 5.3 Cultural and Entertainment Uses, it's just a spelling error.
I apologize for that.
It's fine. Section 5.5 Mixed Use Development, just a comment. I was thrilled to see they were requiring, and it says, vertical and horizontal integration of mixed use. Often, communities get really obsessed with vertical mixed use, where you've got a coffee shop, you know, friend-style on the ground floor with an apartment above. Often, if we have mixed-use neighborhoods, horizontal integration of uses is great, that, you know, it may not be in the best interest for a building to have commercial on the ground floor with residential above. So I just appreciate that foresight. And that might be it for my comments, folks. So thank you for bearing with me.
This wasn't very long at all.
Start on my left. I just jumped in. You stole all my little.
Do you have any?
Just one thing, back to the green rating system, is it, the word large, does it? Could it be any development?
Page two.
Yeah, LU 1.3. Is there, was there a reason behind that you were wanting it to be only large developments? Or is that?
Well, in practical terms, I mean, those have been the ones that have been, you know, looking at this, not as necessarily like house by house.
Right, right.
You know, we wouldn't look for necessarily a LEED Taco Bell or something per se, although it would be cool, you know, if they did that. We probably should get a little more specific in there without being too specific for a general plan to, you know, what is large? Is it 10 units? Is it 50 units? Is it 500 units? Or comparable? So that's a good point.
And then also to Burnett's, Commissioner Austin's, comments, just keeping biking, I didn't see what's on it, sorry. Just keeping biking on top of mind, because I didn't see, I only saw it mentioned once, and maybe I missed it in another area.
Yeah, I think what we ought to do as we're looking at, you know, anything that's about neighborhoods, that biking be mentioned as in addition to just being walkable.
Well, right. I think her point to the connection is key, and also just parking, safety, access, all of those elements that make it so much easier.
To piggyback on that, I know I shouldn't be talking out of turn, but regards to bike parking, it is something that we do have to be really thoughtful about. Often, if it's put in a place that is convenient for the development, it's not always the most convenient for the user. So actually, one of your colleagues at the city has described, people are like water, they take the path of least resistance, and that's true of pedestrians and people on bikes, that, you know, if you don't put things in a place that is logical and accessible, not just as an afterthought, people may not use it. So people will lock their bikes to an awkward fencing in front of your establishment if you put your bike parking in some weird out-of-place. So just, you know, I don't know. I feel like if there's a walkable neighborhood, section 3.8, it would be worth it to put something in for biking, maybe in the same section, or adding to making it walkable, bikable neighborhood. bikable neighborhoods and addressing things. Cause bike parking is actually kind of significant. It's not ju, it's different than my connectivity comment.
Yeah, and we do need design, better design standards for that on, for end of, for day-to-day use and, and projects. So, put that down on our list for when we completely overhaul the zoning ordinance. We need to put in, address bike parking, you know, properly in there. That makes, that makes sense.
And I think that was, some of the, the area on the architecture, do you take into consideration, you know, historic versus new and-
I knew you were gonna listen.
Just not having to fit into and du faux historic versus, she knows where I'm going at with this.
Well, yeah, this is a debate we've had particularly in Washington.
Yeah.
Where, you know, you have very robust existing historic buildings, yet we're still trying to build new stuff that people can build, you know, today. And do it, do it in a way that, you know, makes sense economically, you know, but doesn't, you know, just sort of, you know, bulldoze, you know, figuratively or literally, it's sort of the historic character in the area.
Right.
So, you know, the way we have tried to do that in Washington, and we'll be updating that plan to try to get at this. I think, to me, this is like the root of the issue in, in Washington in particular. We've tried to look at modern forms, but perhaps using more classic materials on those buildings. I think the, you know, the example I can point to is the building at Third and C Streets, the, you know, commercial building with the apartments on top. There's definitely a certain modern form, but it really played off the firehouse, in particular with its materials. I guess it's debatable whether or not the strategy has been successful in Washington. In my opinion, it's probably had varying degrees of success. So, we're trying to balance, you know, what people can and should build today versus in an area where there is a historic context. Elsewhere in our community, such as Bridge District, you know, sky's the limit on architecture as far as we're concerned. There's, we're not beholden to anything there, or even in somewhere like Pioneer Bluff and many of other communities. So, we, this is a struggle at times in the real world to balance, you know, modern growth, you know, with respecting our history.
Well, no, I mean, I just, just, you know, coming back from Boston recently, and they do a really amazing job of melding historic. Obviously, they're, you know, oldest city in America, and then a lot of new, modern development. And they do it very well, I think. And it's one thing I think that, that other parts of our region struggle with a little bit.
Yeah, we know. We, we need to learn, you know, some better, you know, techniques for that. And when we come through with Washington, falling off the Washington Sustainable Community Strategy effort, we really need to put pen to paper as to how to do that. Not just say we're going to, but how. And that's one thing the plan lacks currently, is a lot of guidance on how to do that. And so, we definitely look forward to a lot of the good discussion about that, cause admittedly at staff level, you know, we have definitely struggled with that in the real world on projects, you know, in that neighborhood. And I worked on a lot of them up there. And, I don't know, some of them I think went okay. Some of them could have been a little better, you know, in hindsight.
Great. Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Do you have any comments?
Yes.
Land use? Okay.
Um, well, initially I wanted to say that I, I thought this document was excellent. And I'm really excited to live here. I really like everything you, you put in here. And I think that the details are just outstanding. I had a few things for, for land use. That's not, that's not where I excel. But I did, I did have a couple of things. So, I noticed in reading the other two sections, and I had noted it on this section initially as well, I, I feel like, and I'm not sure if I missed it in, in the various pages, but I feel like I didn't see anything about walkways. And, and I think that Commissioner Austin kind of hit on that exactly. So, that was something that I thought would be, would be a great addition, cause I know it's something that we repeatedly talk about in our, in our meetings. And then I just had, I just thought some of the language was a little bit awkward. I'm not sure if that's because I'm not familiar with the city planning languages or terms, but in, on page two dash six, under 1.3, the heading is travel experience. And when I read the paragraph underneath, that's not at all what I expected to see. I just thought it was a, a strange title for, for that. To me, it was more like mobility-
Apologize, apologize. Which section, which particular policy were you referred to?
1.3.
Oh, you jumped, I'm sorry.
Did I jump?
You jumped to urban structure.
Oh.
They're both page two-
That's why I was confused.
-dash something, so. Yeah.
Am I not supposed to be there?
Are we ready to move on to urban design?
I go to attachment two.
Yeah, so attachment two, which is, flip a few, flip like ten pages.
Oh.
And you get to land u, the land use element.
Well, that would understand why I never could find two dash seventeen.
Yeah, we did, we did staple them to your packet a little bit out of order, and I apologize for that.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna just wait, because I'm not quite sure what I had written down in that section, so. It's all good.
Am I right? Mr. Moore? You're just smiling, so.
Well, no, I, I think what you did is great, because, I mean, I, we got to be around in the first general plan, and it was just mind-boggling. This one's not much better, but the detail is, you know, so much better. I mean, it just seems like everything I, I read. I have a couple of quick comments, because I don't think any of my, you know, I read this section in two point four, page two point four, and it's all talking about SECOG and the blueprint plan. And we kind of had discussions, and I don't wanna get too far afield here, but I don't want SECOG to control our destiny. I wanna make sure that we're still controlling our destiny. And some of these comments seem like we're gonna follow whatever SECOG says to the hilt. And I just, I don't believe that SECOG is a know-all of what, what, what's best for West Sacramento. I think overall for the area, they do, but I know other cities have fought them a little bit on certain things. I still want SECOG to be our controlling factor. I want us to be our controlling factor. And I, I don't know quite what else I would say about that, but I just didn't quite like all of the, the comments. It just seemed like they were a little bit too powerful for some of it. So, and I know there is some say in there, but I still wanna be able to have our say in it, too. I went down just for the heck of it, cause I only have two more comments. But on page two dash twenty-two, and it was talking about trucking uses, and it says we're gonna try to bring them into the city. And it kind of was something you talked about earlier, and I was gonna bring it up, that, that's how West Sacramento started. Probably the biggest factor in making West Sacramento is the trucking industry in this town, and how we have warehousing and trucking and serve Sacramento. And I, I just thought what you said was pretty decent, you know, and it was, it was a good comment. I didn't think it was a bad comment at all, that we still try to keep them around, cause that was our heritage. And then my comment that kinda is gonna go with what Bernadette's been saying, everybody's been talking about, and I'm just not sure where we bring it up, cause it's throughout here, it's the trail system. Our trail system, we actually have a trail plan somewhere.
Yeah, it's the bike ped master plan.
Yeah, something like that. Bike master, but it also, you know, not only does it include, you know, and I, I saw it here, talking about connecting to open spaces, which was on page two dash twenty-three. It's back in the health section. It's back up in the very first section talking about the plan. And, but this plan that was developed, we need to think about what we're gonna do with the, the levees, and how that could attach a little bit. You know, we're on almost every main drain that goes through town. We had a project, some of the commissioners will remember the project that was on Marshall Road with, it used to be a dog training facility out there, and it was going along. And the comment was, who's going to bridge across the main drain to connect the bike path? And, you know, there is a path out there. And not only is it for pedestrians and bicycles, it's also, as Mr. Tilley would like to, you know, it's also for horses and things like that. And, you know, I, I just haven't, I don't know if that's coming, is that coming next? Is that kind of what you were talking about?
Well, yeah, the, the-
The park plan and-
Yeah, there's, there is a existing, you know, bike ped master plan that gets into the weeds of where the trails would go, how they should be designed, funded. So, the general plan really, you know, sets the foundation for actually having a bike ped master plan, and sort of sets out sort of the broad objectives about having trails, about having connectivity, you know, for biking, walking, mules, et cetera. And, and then the bike master plan is really how that is implemented, and, you know, and then taken almost to a design level. So, this, some of that stuff came across the mobility element that we looked at earlier this, this year. But when we come back, hopefully with the parks and recreational, and hopefully that'll tie it all together. But this is setting up these overarching objectives, and then points to the, the bike ped master plan as to exactly how they're implemented, you know, in day-to-day life.
You know, and David, not to get too far afield here, because I, I know we've gotta talk about the plan, because there was a group that went down, we had a, I don't know, an event down here where we talked about the plan. And the fellows that were helping you with it didn't understand that horses were included in that plan, because I heard from two or three people from the horse group that were down there. They said, they didn't even know it existed. So, you know, we gotta make sure that that's all part of this. And I promise I'll just make this real quick. Cause I don't know where I'm at, but I could be on the urban section. And on page two point six, it talked about the travel experience, and it talked about boats and walking, but it never said horse in it. I, I think I'm there. I'm not, I think I'm in the other section, in the beginning, because it says UD 1.3, and it says travel experience. And it talks about everything except horses in there. And I just don't know if you need to include it, or how we talk about it. But I just wanna make sure. I mean, if we don't include horses, that's fine, but if our plan that we currently have has them in there, and I just wanna make sure that, you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we are, we did, we are in the other element.
Well, we are in the other section, and I knew that.
But this is good, because it shows how they relate.
But they do. They all, they've all tied together, which I think is so exciting, because that's hard to do. And I think you guys have done a good job doing that at this point. That's it. That's, that's my point.
Yeah, I feel, sometimes I feel like I'm just the goal line running back that's been carried, brought in to carry the football over the line. Other people have brought it the other ninety-nine yards, so. But I, I appreciate what everyone has been saying thus far, myself and colleagues past and present. I've contributed a lot to this.
Andrew, do you have any comments on land use?
Um, two questions, actually. The first one is in regards to page two dash three, land use element one dot one zero on multi parcel development. Is this a addition that was not in previous general plans, or has this similar language existed in previous plans?
No, this, this is, this is newer. This is something where we, that's come up sort of in the real world. You know, looking at things on a, you know, every parcel sort of in a vacuum is challenging. I wanna be able to look at parcels sort of a little more collectively, even if they plan to maintain them separately for, there's, you know, typically financing reasons, other things why they might not wanna merge them all together. So, by having this, this does allow us to, you know, be a little more flexible in a, in a larger development context, and not have to look at everything as one parcel completely, you know, in a vacuum.
So, would, in context of a recent decision this commission made in regards to the Bridge District, intensity and FAR exemptions on multi properties for development by a single developer, the way this is written, would this preclude future decisions of that type from coming to the commission? Like, I feel like it's written in a way that's fairly strong-worded.
It wouldn't necessarily preclude projects coming to the mission. I mean, that, those, those last one we took, brought up, came primarily, principally because, you know, they needed a map to divide the property. And we really wanted to encourage on that prod, this was the Smart Growth Investors Phase Two over there at Bridge District. We wanted the commission to, you know, sort of focus on the totality of that development, and not like each individual lot. Cause, you know, many times, you know, the map is what brings it before the planning commission, but the map is the, is sort of more the mechanism of how the project is, would be implemented. You know, the project to us was the twenty-something units they wanted to build, and the drive oil, and the architecture, and less so the map. So, having something like this does help us look at a project even like that more holistically, rather than, you know, lot by lot. That would have been impractical on that project, you know, lot by lot.
Thank you very much. My other question, and this may not be the appropriate element to bring it up, but since there is some mention of LEED, I'm wondering if there's an appropriate place to touch on residential energy efficiency, or residential solar, or solar and other energy efficiency opportunities somewhere in the land use element, or another element, if it's more appropriate there?
There is some stuff in the housing element, but, you know, we should get into that perhaps here as well. And I'd even gonna propose a little off the fly, that perhaps we even mention gray water systems at this point.
Resource, just resource efficiency.
Yep. That's all. Thank you.
Martha?
I wanted to also say that this is well-written, David. I, you know, looking, looking back over the years of where we have come from and where we are today, and how the city has been really committed to the general plan in the growth, and just constantly, you know, making sure that any future development, any, any conversations we have is wedded to what we are doing here today. And, and I also appreciate the comments from my fellow commissioners who have, you know, are, are looking into this very closely, bringing their, their expertise here, looking at, you know, where Boston is, and, you know, maintaining our historic sites and preserving that, the appearance of that. Our older neighborhoods, making sure that, you know, the development is progressing as well. So, just wanted to, you know, bring that, you know, statement up, and, you know, really appreciate all that you've done and the work that the city staff have done in putting this together.
Okay. I have no additional comments on the land use. So-
Well, good.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. And then we went to urban structure and design?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Was that the proof section?
Yeah, that's the one you pointed out.
So, since Charlie's already commented on that, we'll skip him on this one. I'll jump, I'll just keep us going back in order, the way we've been going. So, we'll start with-
I think I actually jumped around also, cause my other comment on the historic and-
This is a good place for it.
Modern, I had, I had mentioned it once before. Do you want me to mention it again? Yeah, I mean, basically, like I said, just, what page is that? I lost again. Um, two point six?
Yes.
Yeah. UD 1.8. And again, you know, I'm not sure, you know, you would know more than, than I would on, on the best wording. But really assuring that we're not encouraging faux historic.
Do you wanna give an example of what you're talking about, what you don't wanna see?
Um-
It doesn't have any building, but just a general-
Yeah, a good example or a bad example.
So, this is ugly building, no?
No, I think that a lot of times you'll see where developers are made to fit into the neighborhood. So, whether it's Victorian, or Craftsman, or, you know, any other sort of historic design that was, that is familiar with this area. And then the, they try to fit into that and, and try to match it. And as your, to your previous comment about materials, it just never ends up looking the same. And, and the quality is not as good, because the materials aren't the same, and they're not the same quality. And, versus encouraging something to pair well with it, versus trying to- trying to match it.
Yeah, there's only two blocks in town where you're, you have to do a building in those, in that type of vernacular, and those are both in Washington. And because there are some, you know, really beautiful Delta Victorians still existing over there, late eighteen hundreds version, I, offline, but I would be curious to, we, we had a gentleman build a, build a duplex over there a few years ago, at around near Fourth and D Streets. And I'd be, I'd be curious to hear from, related back to this, if any commissioners have seen that, or drive by it, um, you know, what your take is on it, because that was where, and where we attempted to do what you're suggesting that we not do, and it's, you know, it's debatable how successful that one was.
Yeah, check it out, that's what she's saying.
Um, but, it's, that was the most recent example that I can think of on that one, and is building another one next door, so we'll do better on that one, but we tried.
Right. Okay. Um, yeah, that was my only comment in that section. I think that, that was, and I had meant to mention, actually, previously before, I'm going to jump around, but on water use as well, and you mentioned gray water, but water collection, and I know it's obviously in, in the city audiences now, but, in this as well. That's all.
Richard, have any comments?
I have nothing to add, I'm pretty pleased with this section.
Wow. Pardon me?
Okay, well, now that we're back to where I was, I did flip through, in the last section, I actually had not one note, so, um, so that worked out well. So, I thought one point three, where it says travel experience, I really didn't like the term travel. To me, what's represented in the paragraph underneath is more like mobility, but maybe I'm not familiar with the usage of the word travel in city planning in this context. And then, uh, as I, I brought it up earlier, um, and I think at this point several commissioners have, have discussed, just the walkways, and I didn't see it in this particular section, and I noticed that I saw it in the others. Um, and I just know it's something we talk about quite frequently at our meetings, so I didn't think it was represented. Maybe it doesn't go in land use. I think it does. I think it goes here because part of our purpose is, is connecting the different types of uses. Uh, I just feel like that's kind of the spirit of where we've been going here, and I really like that part of our city, I really like that there's these little trails everywhere. Uh, it's, it's really enjoyable. Um, this might be a little bit nuanced, but on section one point one two, the development regulations, I thought the paragraph was very awkward, maybe it's supposed to be like open and broad, but I thought it was just awkwardly phrased. And I think that's all I have for this section.
Charlie?
Well, since I've already talked to you about horses in that-
Horses, horses.
My, my other comment, and the only comment I had here, see, I don't even think I'm in that section, I think I'm threw up in the very front. So, if I'm up in the very front of this thing, which is page two point two, and it talks about Southport villages, you know, and my only comment was, it said, however, each village will have some small increases in density, and I just don't know how you'd have more density if we take away a three-hundred-foot levee along the whole bunch of those. I just don't think every village is going to have an increase in density.
Yeah, they, they may, um, it depends on how, you know, what the market brings, you know, at the time.
You know, and it's only a comment, it just means, I'm just not sure they're all going to have it for sure. I just, I just think there's other elements to it, so I'm not sure every village will have an increase. I think it's possible to have an increase, but I just don't think they're going to have it.
Okay.
That was my only comment.
So, may have, maybe instead of will have?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a wording thing, I'm just not convinced that they're all going to have it, or will allow them all to have it.
I have no comments on this section.
Wow. Michael?
Um, I have no comments on this section.
Wow, this is where most of my comments were.
He saves for you.
Okay, so, um, there's a, a couple of, uh, concerns with, uh, general, um, citywide things, that, you know, and this, this is, this is the place for generalness. Uh, the specifics are in the policies, so, um, the urban design one point five urban skyline, um, I, I have a concern with signage on tall buildings. I've brought this up at a couple, a couple of, um, commissions before, and specifically in the Bridge District, I kicked myself for missing it. Um, we don't have any regulation on signage on buildings, on the tall buildings, and my concern is I didn't want down, this is going to be, I don't want to slam any other city. I don't want a skyline with, um, signs on, on it, and this is just my, my personal opinion, because it takes away from the, the character of the skyline and the architecture, which is what you see at nighttime, is the lit-up buildings and, and not the sign, signs. So, it'd be nice to somehow address that at this level. Looks like, David, you want to say something?
Well, we certainly can, and there's, there's, this, this can be a place to do something like that on a broad level, and then, but point to design guidelines in, in specific areas, uh, to, you know, address that, you know, especially when Washington comes up, you know, we will definitely do some additional, you know, mid and higher-rise buildings over there in the waterfront, where, you know, they may want to do this, so, um, it's, it's, it will come up again, so.
Okay. So, can I just clarify something? Are you, is, is your concern about quality of signage, no signage, size? Because I think those are all very different things, I don't think we need to get into this level of nuance, but, you know, signage can actually be quite iconic, but it also can be very tasteless. So, I'm wondering if there's, if you, if you're, if, maybe you, you want to say, you know, uh, high-quality permanent materials, or, you know, just to generally, you know, require to go through a, you know, a, some sort of design review process, or, you know, limiting the size to some, I, I just want to get a little more clarity about what your concern is.
Um, personally, my personal preference would be that the signs are kept below a certain story, such as below the third story, because therefore pedestrians traffic not to advertise to the city of Sacramento, um, which is what, or, or the I-5, you know, freeway, which, we do have one building that had, CalSTRS has, has a big sign on the top, and it takes away, in my opinion, it takes away from the architecture. When, when you're looking at the building, and you're looking at this town overall, do you want to see advertising, or do you want to see, uh, the architecture? And so, uh, and we have nothing that is prohibiting signage. We do have something that prohibits signs on top of the buildings, I think that also applies to the tall buildings, thank goodness.
The, the reason I ask you for this clarification is because if, if you limit signage in some way on the buildings, they'll just put a pole up with signs on it. So, I think, you know, we, I think we want to comprehensively address-
They can't actually do that here.
Okay, I'm, I'm just making sure that, you know, that, that we don't have an unintended con, consequence, you know what I mean?
No, I'm not saying no-
Developers find a way around rules.
I'm not saying no signs. Um, and CalSTRS actually did a nice sign.
I thought so, too, I thought it was pretty-
But, given the size of their building, they're probably allowed to have a much bigger sign, probably based on square.
What we could benefit from in, you know, in day-to-day practice is some signage criteria in zoning that's really crafted with large buildings sort of in mind.
Yes.
You know, rather than applying the standards that were really written for one- or two-story retail buildings to, you know, seventeen-story, you know, iconic towers. Um, that's really what we could, you know, benefit from, you know, in day-to-day life. And so, you know, maybe we, we need to have the general plan point to having that when we do create either additional design guidelines, or, you know, when we plan to overhaul the zoning ordinance, uh, because, you know, we need to have, we've sort of incrementally moved in this way, but we need to have a zoning ordinance that really is appropriate for the various types of development patterns that we will have in town. And right now, it's, there's a few limited exceptions, it's sort of one-size-fits-all.
Right.
Can I just comment on that? It, just because the CalSTRS building has the sign, and it doesn't bother me at all, it doesn't seem that it's bad, and yet the Ziggurat building has no sign on it at all, and everybody knows where it is because of the architectural design. And both of them fit the area to my way of looking at it, but I understand that we may not want to have forty buildings in a row with a big sign on it. And that may be, you know, I just don't know where you draw the line, because so far, the two buildings we have there, neither one of them bother me, they're both fine the way they are.
Well, could it also be a matter of visibility?
I'm sorry?
A matter of visibility, for instance, the Rayleigh Field.
Yeah, you can see Rayleigh Field from the freeway.
Well, not the Rayleigh Field sign, the Roseville Auto Mall sign.
Yes, I'm happy that it's not the beer anymore.
I just think it's something that we need to talk about before we make it go too far into this, because I'm, I'm not opposed to either sign that we've seen.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know that I want to see one building after another with a blinking sign on it.
I think a policy, as David indicated, would be beneficial as we move forward, and we're looking at bigger buildings, more bigger buildings, so. Um, okay, moving on, sorry, that was one, my first comment. Um, second comment, uh, one point eight, uh, the historical context. Uh, we, we were on this, and, uh, we've talked about Washington, and we've struggled with Washington before, because there isn't one type of building there, there's several types of building, and so, I want to make sure that we, ensure that we have wiggle room in this one, and I think it's adequately written, uh, in other words, to reflect the historical character, and how the commission has addressed this before, is, you know, with building elements, you know, you design a building with certain elements into it, but we're not trying to rebuild a historical building unless you're on the, uh, Fourth Street, so. Um, so anyway, uh, wiggle room, plus, uh, I, I was partly concerned with, um, the I-Street Bridge on that one, but let's jump over to, um, UD two point five, River Crosses and Bridges. Um, the final sentence is, in that one, is to reinforce the significance of historical bridges. Um, I have a concern, and I'm not sure how to address it at this level. My concern is, way down the road, if the railroad should abandon I-Street Bridge, they would have to build a new one, because they just need that line. And what happens to the old I-Street Bridge? So, when, when vehicle traffic, traffic is off of the bridge onto the new I-Street Bridge, um, which I'm going to love, um, there's hope that it becomes, say, a pedestrian or a parkway, um, that's not what I'm talking about here, is when the, uh, when UP decides that they may need to abandon it, does this become a historical landmark and then forever is there as an object? And now we have a new I-Street Bridge, the old I-Street Bridge, a new railroad bridge, and then Tower Bridge, hopefully a, a pedestrian bridge at R Street, the, uh, the freeway, and then Broadway, and now-
It looks like London.
We've got clutter, or clutter, and I don't want to be married to that bridge, should we abandon it. Um, also, there's problems with it, it has to, I mean, it has to be movable, and if it, if it gets abandoned, that means it has to stay open, which also means it's not a parkway either, so. I know that was a very long, um, explanation, but I, I would like to make sure that we keep some wiggle room for not, um, being married to historical objects. Okay, um, just another one. Um, the, on section, or UD fi, five point four, changes in scale, I appreciated this, and I think we've tried to incorporate this into many of our residential areas, where you, you know, you, you start thin, you start small, and you go up in big. Um, this doesn't work for the, say, the Bridge District, when you said sky's the limit, we will go a, a tall building right on the edge, uh, except it does scale back, I guess, towards the western side.
Yeah, the, my sky's the limit, I was a prider in terms of, you know, architectural style. The Bridge District does have a, have a building pattern, you know, set up that, uh, looks at this, because the Bridge District is divided into four neighborhoods, and the tallest buildings are actually in the core, off the waterfront, uh, not right on the waterfront. That was a tenant from the original Triangle Plan, you know, with the goal of not building, you know, flanks of buildings along the riverfront that essentially block the riverfront, you know, from the rest of the district. So, that's where the, you know, the highest FARs, um, and, you know, build out potentials in those core blocks, which are the ones generally just south of Rayleigh Field. Um, so, that, at least on a neighborhood level within the Bridge District, um, that this stuff is accomplished, you know, neighborhood level, not, you know, lot by lot. And that's how that plan was taken, that was definitely, definitely carried forth from the Triangle Plan.
I, that was actually, then, a bad example. I want to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves, say waterfront, um, where you have CalSTRS across the street from, uh, one-story homes, two-story homes, um, I want to make sure that this, this element doesn't limit our potential between zones. That was my final comment in this section. So, unless there's a follow-up, um, now we go to healthy communities. Charlie, that's the third one.
My comment is, I still eat potato chips and ice cream, so, I have no comment here, I think this is a wonderful idea.
Barbara, have her get, get on you on that. Okay, in the spirit of keeping it in the same order.
Uh, yeah, only comment I have is, I love this section as well, and, and are we one of the only cities that's actually doing this?
Uh, it's, it is becoming more and more common and prevalent, uh, you know, some communities have, you know, done these already, and some go to, you know, much greater sort of level of detail, you know, than we do. But, you know, this is, you know, ULI has the big, you know, twenty-one-point, you know, step, you know, the toolkit, so, I mean, this is a, you know, front and center, you know, really sort of globally from a ULI perspective. And, um, I know there was a earlier, you know, ULI whole-day workshop on this, um, down, down there, several months ago, I know Commissioner Austin was there as well as myself. So, um, I think you'll start seeing this, you know, everywhere, and, uh, because, you know, people are starting to finally connect the dots, and I remember at that conference, the, I think it was the Public Health Director in Sacramento County, when she finally, you know, knocked on the door of some of the planning people over there, and they, they started and said, gee, you know, we have a lot of things in common, and, you know, maybe we should work together on some of this stuff. And, and I think that it's a sort of, you know, germinated from those types of interactions, recognizing that, you know, the built environment can affect, you know, health, you know, in some ways, in some cases negatively, and so we'd rather do that positively.
Right. Yep, so I, I love this section, it's really well-written, and I think it covered, um, many critical areas, so.
I am so disappointed that Commissioner Kelter is not here to comment on this, we have such an incredible resource. So, hopefully, the rest of us can do him, you know, honor his, what I hope would be his intention in making comments here. So, I'll start with, um, uh, although Mr. Tilly has mentioned that, um, it's becoming increasingly common in general plans for there to be a health element, I want to underscore that they are a health element, and that particularly the social equity overlay in this section is incredibly progressive, and just, again, the, the policy and, you know, management, staff efforts that have gone into this are very, very commendable. The very fact that community equity is the very first piece of this, I love. So, thank you very much for paying attention, I mean, environmental justice, volunteerism, that's incredible, very, very progressive, is not, is atypical of a general plan. Um, so, some of my comments, um, uh, page two dash three, section two point five, Collaboration for Healthy Recreation. Um, it, I, we don't need to list everybody, but I think that it's, um, it's a significant oversight that we did not include the school district, and I would specifically like to include the school district, so the city, Yola County Health, uh, Public Health Department, and I think the school district are key in Collaborators for Healthy Recreation, particularly because we have, we have, and I hope that we will continue to have, um, some joint use agreements with the school district. Section two point seven, Physical Activity in the Workplace. So, this is in the workplace, maybe it's two point six or two point seven, but, um, I'm thinking that whether it's in this section two, maybe it's two point eight, um, talk about, um, conversion projects, like prioritizing or valuing, because we, we do have conversion projects, and that includes things like the Rails to Trails, like our, um, Clarksburg Rail Line, and we'll continue to, to do that. And then also, you know, we've also looked at, um, abandonment of streets for auto use, so I would like to see, you know, ca- So I would like to see, you know, conversion where it makes sense for bike ped projects. And I think that this is the right section for that, the active living. Let's see, goal three for the healthy eating habits. Again, I think, I think this year, you know, our, our city is, has the highest per capita, you know, farmer's market and farm stand, that's incredible. So section three point seven, and a couple, there's several references to farmer's markets, which I think is great, but I think if we could also include farm stands, that's playing an increasingly significant role in our community. So if we just add that into those sections, or even in the titles of three point seven, three point eight, three point nine, three point ten, three point eleven, that would be excellent. Let's go through here, might actually be for my comments. That's it, thank you.
I do have a few things. I was also going to say that it's unfortunate that Commissioner Kelter isn't here. This is, this is exactly his purpose, so I'm really, I'm really sad that he's not here to offer his input. I would really be interested in what his insights are.
This will come, ultimately come back to Planning Commission, and, but we did provide him this packet. We knew he was going to be here, and I'll definitely like to follow up with him offline to, you know, get his input. I know this is his, you know, time, prime target, I'm sure.
I did have a few things. I, generally, I, I love that this section exists at all. But I did have a few things, a few suggestions. The first one was on section one point four. Well, first, I want to say that when we're talking about healthy communities, I don't think employment is the first thing that comes to anybody's mind. And with my background as an employment attorney, I really love that you're, the city's considering that. Because we, most people spend so much time at work. And activity and inactivity at work, and sitting at your desk all day, I mean, it's really affecting everybody's overall health, and I think it's just so commendable that we've got, employment is mentioned multiple times throughout this section, and I was just very excited to see that. So in one point four, and I believe I offered the same suggestion for another policy document that had come before us several months ago. But I, I wanted to see if we could add maybe the term EEO compliant, because I think it's great that we have fair compensation, adequate benefits, safe work environment. But we also, of course, want to prevent work, work environments that are harassment and discrimination-free. So, so I, I thought it would be nice to include that in here. In section two point five, I, I actually wanted to echo Commissioner Austin's suggestion regarding the school district. I didn't catch that, actually, but I was, I reread this entire document because I noticed that there wasn't enough connection between physical activity for children. And I know that that's, that's kind of where you're going with this. So I think that, that's actually a really good suggestion here. I saw that school physical fitness was in there, but I felt like that was the only real thing that we were, we were, that addressed children. So I think that's a great idea for two point five. And then also, on section four point three. So I, when I moved from San Jose, and maybe it was the people I was with, but it, it was, it was just, there's this term, and it's called wellness. And I don't hear it as much here, maybe because I don't really go anywhere, but. I really work at home. No, I work at home, and then my, I, I often make appearances that are still in the Bay Area. So I haven't heard it in the circles that I don't, I, I'm not a part of in this area. But I was thinking that this would be a great place to put the term for well, like wellness options, which I, I cannot give you the exact definition, but, you know, it's, it's, workplaces are, especially in the Bay Area and major cities, but workplaces are being, are doing really great things with offering just ways for employees to be healthy and fit while at work, including the stand-up, sit-down desks, and various perks for walking, and things like that. And they offer healthy options and vending machines. Anyways, I thought that would be a great section to put it in. If that's not a great section, then, you know, somewhere else. Because I really thought we should have a wellness type of component here.
I, I think that makes sense. I mean, well, the, the wellness stuff, you commonly know as wellness, certainly goes toward, you know, overall, you know, literal health, so.
And, and then I was really happy to see the childcare section.
Me too.
This got better and better as I read through. I, I liked five point one-two, Information to Employers About the Childcare Services, and then also the training. I don't really know the community college programs here, but I imagine that there are, that's already incorporated within the curriculum. But I think that's just great to be training our local, our local residents in childcare. And then obviously, we want to put our children in the care of local residents. I thought that was an excellent addition here, something else, I never would have thought of that in the, in the health, in the health communities element. And also five point two zero, I thought that was excellent as well, to encourage employers and corporate contributions towards employee childcare costs. I think overall, this section sends a really great message of, of an overall picture of health, health, and really just a general happiness in, in balance in life. What we're really trying to achieve here, I think it was excellent.
Yeah, we would like to note that this section here includes a lot of input from Carol Richardson, our Assistant City Manager, just retired recently. So this, part of this stuff will continue a lot of the, you know, goals and programs that, you know, she largely established here, including our whole early, early learning program.
Okay, Charlie?
I'm done.
Andrew?
You know, my only comment dealt with the trail system beginning here. And the rest of this, I think, is fascinating. I just never, most of the stuff you never even think about having in a general plan. So, I mean, I, I just think overall, it's just great. And with the comments that are being made, it can only make it a little better.
No, absolutely, no. This is somewhat of a new frontier for us, and we might, I'm really excited about getting this part to the council as well, and, you know, seeing where they're at on many of these things, and what our capacities are to pursue some of these objectives.
Andrew? So this is oddly the section I had the most amount of feedback on. So I would ask my colleagues to bear with me for a few minutes. And there's, they're going to kind of come in two forms, I think. The first form is just general feedback on specific elements. And the second form is probably a larger point I want to bring to the attention of the commission about the purpose of a general plan. Because my understanding of the purpose of the general plan is to help us guide development and land use decisions. And in this element in particular, I struggled in several cases, although I support the policy, to translate what some of the policies and individual elements were saying we would do in terms of a land use decision. And so, David, I'll point out a couple of those to you along the way. Maybe you can either provide context for me, or maybe we can take another look. And I actually had some suggestions on a few about how we can connect it to something that would actually be a land use or development decision, or context that would apply. So with that framework, I wanted to start at the beginning on one point one. And this is more, so before I was in economic development, I was in environmental policy. And the term environmental justice has very different meanings to all sorts of different people. And I think in the context that's presented here, I would consider the subtitle for this element, or the title for this element being more about environmental equity or environmental health. Generally, environmental justice to me is a term that is used when there has been an environmental wrong that needs to be fixed or dealt with. And so you're seeking justice before the bad environmental conditions you've been forced or placed into. And so I think we should just maybe consider thinking about heading for that one a little more.
Admittedly, the, you know, the term environmental equity is much more in vogue, I think, you know, now, from what we used to know as EJ, you know, in the past.
So one of the, to get to kind of switch to my second general theme, one point four, the social equity in the workplace. And I want to say this with a great deal of sensitivity, because I support this concept a wholeheartedly. However, this is one of those points where I looked at and I said, how is this going to translate into a land use or development decision? And could this be used in actually, in a way, we wouldn't want it to be in the future? Because it's so explicitly spelled out in the document that is meant to design, to, to, to guide us in land use and development decisions.
Well, I guess the, you know, the response would be that, you know, even though, you know, we think of the general plan related to growth and land use development, it, it can definitely go, you know, beyond those. Not, I mean, not every policy that we have in the general plan is, directly relates to a project, you know, a development project, you know, that comes before you. Example, I can think of our current general plan, there's a policy in there that says that we won't charge business license fees to in-home daycares. That never has come up here, you know, at Planning Commission, when, you know, we look at projects. But it's still a policy, you know, in there that guides us. So even though much of the general plan does guide land use and development, a lot of it guides other, you know, city activities that, you know, may not be, you know, development-related, and that was, that's a prime, you know, that's a prime example. And I think this policy is, you know, proposed in here because this is something the city promotes internally. And thus, if we're promoting it internally, we presumably ought to encourage that externally. But this is one, if it were in the general plan in the future, and we bring a subdivision before you, it's probably not likely to be directly relevant to that land use decision. But it doesn't necessarily have to be either.
Okay.
Well, just because I don't understand this, wonder if you just use another business. And a business was to come to town, and somebody said they don't pay a fair wage.
Then they're in violation of multiple laws and.
No, no, it doesn't say they're not paying a wage that's the correct wage. They said they don't pay a good enough wage, or they don't provide good enough benefits. I mean, would that affect a business coming to town?
Well, this is a.
I mean, you could pick a business, pick Walmart. I mean, I hear that all the time, that they don't pay enough or have the correct benefits, yet they, they're totally legal what they do. But, I mean, would we be making a decision about them coming to town under this?
I would say no, that's certainly not what we're intending to do, is to.
That was my question.
This is why I wonder, I'm, you know, I've really been encouraged by the discussion. I'm looking forward to the discussion tonight, because this is maybe pushing the boundaries a little bit of what, perhaps what we traditionally do, especially here at Planning Commission. But we very much want to hear what these types of things, because, you know, there's no commission that we have that, you know, is dedicated to this type of thing. So ultimately, we want to take whatever we have and then bring that to the council, you know, before they ever adopt the general plan. And they may, they may say, you know what, that stuff sounds good, but maybe that's further we want to go in our general plan, you know, and that, that'll be, certainly will be fine. But, you know, we are, you know, trying to, you know, float this stuff up and get this type of input. And then, you know, we'll hear from the council on some of these things, too.
Well, I think some of the, the key words in this section are fair, adequate, and safe. And I'm not sure anyone really can argue with those.
Also, it's encourage, the city shall encourage employers.
Really what we need to do more work on this one is, okay, this sounds great, but then how? Is the next question, and the implementation of this is still, you know, still, we're still germinating that. But I know, you know, when we get to council, that's the first question I'm going to get, is how?
And I think that was probably my challenge with several of them, especially, and not just on the ones related to employment or workplace, but also on the ones related to the relationship with schools. Because they, they are, they're a very separate entity. And so it's great that we want to support a physical fitness program at schools. I think one way we could do that through land use is through safe routes to schools and promoting facilities, parks and stuff close to schools and in neighborhoods to promote physical education. But I don't know how we get to supporting physical fitness programs at schools and where the connection is from a planning land use perspective. And so I, I hate to jump around, but it's, it's, it's not, my, my comments aren't enigmatic or, you know, hating one, any of the concepts, it's just how do we do that? And how does it function in terms of the general plan ideal? Is that, so, so there's, there's several of them in here, and we can, we can hit on each one if you want, or I can just skip over them for time's sake, insanity's sake, for everyone.
Well, I mean, I think your point is, is well-taken about how some of these, you know, may not be, you know, sort of directly related to a lot of the things that we bring before the Planning Commission, you know, development projects and things. And in the end, you know, some of them, you know, may not, you know, be, when we bring the projects before you, you know, general plan consistency is always in there. And we try to bring about every policy we think is even remotely, you know, related to the project that's before you. For, in most projects, it does tend to be a fairly limited number of policies that really have a lot of direct application to, to the, to the project at hand. And so otherwise, you know, your staff reports would all be twelve pages long, because I, we'd have to analyze, you know, a hundred and something policies on every project. So the general plan is that, it is very general, very foundational. There are the seven required elements, but beyond that, we have a lot of latitude to put a lot of things, you know, in there. And this is one where we're using the latitude that's afforded to us to go beyond just the, those core things that a general plan has to have.
If I could switch pages to two dash four. I was interested if we could add something to item three point two, or element three point two, on the Food Policy Council about why we're creating Food Policy Council. So I get the what and the who there, but I didn't get the why. And so I think it might be helpful to say, we're establishing Food Policy Council to achieve some sort of end or several ends. And then on, similarly on three point eleven, may, I think we should try to move away from using the term food stamps, and either move to CalWorks or social services in general. I think food stamps is a bit of a dated term at this point.
We can change that term to CalFresh Benefits, that's the current term.
And then on, similarly on three point one-two, under Affordable Housing Developments, I'm interested to know why we wouldn't encourage all new multi-unit housing developments to contain shared spaces for community gardens, as opposed to just affordable housing units.
That's a good point.
So I'd like to throw that out there for consideration. And that's it. Other than, in total, let me surmise, because I've probably been a bit critical. I love this element, I love the contents of this element. I just had a hard time connecting some of the dots to the policy goal, which I think is also demonstrated in other documents we have in the city, whether it be our strategic plan, our action items, to the land use focus that my brain naturally wants to take me in. So I hope that was helpful.
If I can just piggyback on what Commissioner Sternfels was saying. If you flip back to section two point two and two point four, I, I think you make, you know, it's a nuanced point, but I think you make a good point. And I think that it would be easy enough to put that sentence from two point two under two point four, and designing parks and recreation programs that promote physical fitness across all ages, you know, that could include supporting physical fitness programs in partnership with the school district. I think it's very easy to roll one into another, because I, I agree, that one's a little bit odd. The city doesn't have purview over the schools, really.
I mean, I don't even disagree with the city supporting those programs. I just don't know how, what is, you know, what's the hit, what's the tag? And I think there's tags from a land use perspective, naturally, I think about those things. And so I want to see those, but I didn't, and I do in other places, I guess, throughout the document.
All right, all right, here we go.
I'll hold my comments.
Okay. I also appreciate the healthy communities element. I think that, that I see, I do see the nexus as we look to developing our, our community in the future. We have the food barn, you know, we're taking a look at what nutritious elements are going to be happening there for our community when they go out and eat, with their families going out there. And, you know, looking at these various, these various elements, these various goals, I wanted to add just a couple of thoughts as we go forward on page two dash three, HC two point two, and the school physical fitness. I was looking at it from a family perspective, as the child returns home, you know, trying to encourage the, the child to work with the family in some way, and maybe promote family fitness program activities. So that, so that, you know, whatever they're teaching in the school, that it's also, you know, applied in the home. And kind of, you know, just changing what, you know, the skills are there, and so that way they work together. And in looking at HC two point seven and two point four, I looked at them together and thought that I think there's a way. and thought that I think there's a way to bridge physical activity in the workplace with our park and recreation programs in some way. I think maybe opening up some opportunities for our employers to have discounted programs for their employees. And that way, I think, like myself, for example, I, I, when I, you know, before I come home, I work out and then I go home, because it's just much easier on my way home. And we talked about, you know, just making it easier just to get from one place to another. Well, I got to say, I run to the gym and then run back to the office, and that just, it just encourages me to continue to do that. And I see also, you know, other employees doing the same thing as they're building more fitness centers out in, on K Street. And so I'm seeing a lot more people use those facilities. Switching over to promote healthy eating habits. My first glance at it, I thought, well, this is good for people that can't afford the food, but there is a significant food insecurity issue in Yolo County overall, but also in West Sacramento. And, you know, if there's a way to add a, a, an additional goal where the city's going to work to, yeah, with the, with the county to increase applications, because we are under utilizing the CalFresh benefits. Families are not participating in the program. And for some reason, they're not, you know, there could be a stigma. So it could be a media awareness program. And so that way, they don't, you know, it may, the, the benefit may be small for some families that are working, it could be just twenty-five dollars, but it could bring healthier food. It can bring, you know, revenue to the farmer's market. So trying to, you know, bridge that and maybe doing, you know, just have an understanding as to where we can leverage the media in certain parts of the city where I think there's a greater food insecurity by just putting that general bullet that we're going to work with the county, so that, you know, that might be something, maybe the far, in the farmer's market, you know, they can do some outreach while they're putting up their stands and doing things like that. That's just an example of, of what I was thinking.
Those are all good ideas. I mean, getting access to healthy food is only good if you can, you can actually purchase it.
Right. In the school nutrition, there are free and reduced lunch programs. And I just wanted to see if there, you know, when you're looking at the school lunches, I just wanted to make sure that those, that those particular lunches are also included as far as the nutrition is concerned. I don't want to see it divided up, but I don't, I don't want to be too prescriptive in the language. But I think, you know, just keeping that in mind as we look at the free and reduced lunch program, that, you know, whatever is provided to those children is also nutritious. Going down to goal HC four point one, just want to say thank you so much for including mental health facilities. And I think that the city has struggled to have access to mental health treatment. And I know we're, we're improving in that area, but there's a major gap still. And so it's good to have that element here. One of the things that the county overall is struggling with is a substance abuse detox program. We don't have, we, we have free to choose program in, that is offered, I think, maybe once a week. And so folks can come in and participate. I'm hearing that there are people that are interested in more of those services. But one of the things I think we would benefit from, that I've heard from law enforcement and, you know, folks that also have a dual diagnosis, is access to substance abuse treatment. We do have community service programs to aim at combating tobacco, alcohol, and drug dependency. But I wanted to incorporate that in the healthcare facility section, because I think it's important that somebody who has a substance abuse problem also have it in, you know, have access to all the other services in, in that same venue. And also the childcare, just so glad you have the childcare in there. I think that's really important for families that are, you know, going to work, families that, you know, being a grandma myself, I have found myself providing childcare, so looking to see what we can do to, you know, support other families. In looking at HC five point one oh legislation, you have high quality standards. There are a couple of aspects to standards. There's a quality rating system to standards, and then there's licensing and inspections. Then the inspection of childcare programs by, you know, current, I think the current inspection is very, like, I think every five years or something like that. And there's recent legislation that was vetoed by the governor to increase it to annual inspections. And it's because of the cost. So, you know, that, that, that's a particular legislation that I'd like to see passed, increasing the inspections. And for the high quality standards, I think that this city does you the rate, utilize the rating system to improve and provide training and improve the quality of care for the children there. So I think that applies as well. And those are all my comments.
Thank you, Mark. I have one specific comment, then just one general comment. Under the active living section, and I'm not going to repeat everything that I agree with. I agree with a lot of comments, especially bike paths, paths getting around. I think what's missing here and what, what could be done to just capture this is another number, say two point eight. And it's just the mobility and reference our, our mobility policy, our bike pedestrian path throughout the city, that plan, or the, I'm sorry, the master plan for that indicate that pedestrian, horse, bicycle particularly are going to be not only encouraged, but supported. And I think this is probably the place to do it. And it's not the same as safe routes to school. It's not the same as recreation. This is getting around in a healthy way. With that, I think the barrage of comments and questions that we've come up with really reflect a document or elements that the commission is not only going to get behind, but excited about, clearly based on the number of comments. I think this is, these are elements that we're looking to implement. So again, thank, thank you to staff.
Now, thank you for having us and, you know, affording the time for this. This is important, and we are looking out twenty years on this. So we want to, I want to bring the rest of the elements that we haven't brought, you know, at our next one or two meetings, then with the goal of then bringing the whole package, you know, back before you proceed as there, once we get the EIR on the street. Because we do want to try, still are endeavoring to complete the general plan just as quickly as we can, but we need this input to be able to do that. So thank you again.
Okay. This was just a workshop, so public comment period is closed for this one. Is there any informal discussion this evening?
Actually, I do have a question slightly related to number three, could be, it can be included in, in, in informal discussion. What opportunity, if any, is there for members of the general public or advocacy groups to provide any review or input of the general plan, either in part or in its entirety? I think like the April twenty fourteen or something, I don't know if there's another.
Yeah, well, the successive, you know, discussions we'll be having at the, on the general plan will be before the planning commission and council. There'll be several stops at each, before each body over the next, you know, three, four, five, six months, as well as the EIR itself will be on the street. And that'll be another opportunity for, for comment. And of course, informally, anyone is welcome to, you know, get ahold of me on these things.
Thank you.
I guess I didn't understand. Are we going to have a, the forum for public comment would be at either the planning commission or the council level?
At this point in time, that's pretty much where we're going to.
We're not going to have those little workshops.
No, we're, we've, we're.
Workshop, yeah.
We're moving on on that. We're, we're, we got a pretty tight, tight budget and tight timeline.
No, that's fine.
On this. And so, because there's several other initiatives that are dependent upon completing the general plan. So we want to try to get as much input as we can, but we do need to try to keep moving forward at the same time.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I gotta say, um, when that happened, it was really. We had a lot of these in the beginning, and I first got there, and I was like, I don't really.
Usually, usually she does break in, and that's fine, because I can.
I don't know if you ever saw me, I had a glossary.